...for that area, right from the get-go. The reason we're not looking to that for enforcement is anybody purchasing a lot there is going to know that they have the ability to have a vacation rental and that their neighbors are going to have the ability to have a vacation rental. So it isn't something, it's not used being inserted into an existing neighborhood where now your neighbor is changing what they're going to do. You're going to know from the get-go that they're going to be permitted to have it. You're going to make a decision on buying a lot there, knowing that you have that one, whereas your neighbors having that right. So inherently, that those neighborhoods aren't going to develop a significant amount of concern for us unless it's being abused, which is, of course, where we would do a normal file enforcement. So those neighborhoods wouldn't be applicable to this policy.
And just going back to that abusing, that zoning, that the stick that we have then is they can have the business license.
Yes, Your Worship, I mean, the fire system as well is in place to bring up compliance, as well as if it was necessary, walking businesses.
Okay. Uh, the motion's on the floor to set the level at 125 bedrooms. I have not seen anything, Counsel Solz.
Your Worship, this is my comment on this in relation to 125. I do agree that this is a good start. I would like to see us review this after the winter season and see how they may help with the possibility of extending or increasing that number at that time if, if, if we wanted to. I think if the people that think to us that have concerns in the past, in the Accommodation Association concerned about their numbers, I think this would be a good starting level. If we can review this in the spring again, just to see how this worked out, if we need to make a change, maybe we could do that.
I think you're going to see this being reviewed lots, or been looked at quite a bit over the next two years, two months, and eighteen days.
Is there any more comments on Counsel Ramon?
Um, Your Worship, I do have a series of motions that I'd like to float out there. I don't know if you want to do that as amendment to one of the ones here, that item four is the most appropriate, I think, or as individual standalone.
Well, I think that if you have something that you don't like on number four and you want to suggest amendment, now would be the time, because we have a motion on the floor. So, I'm not sure what you've got, but it's up to you.
Well, they're not, um...
If they, you have something pertaining to...
One, I guess one that's sort of pertaining to this one, um, I would add an amendment that staff explore, um, that the, for lack of a better word, vacation rental zoning expire upon sale of the property.
So before I ask for a secondary, is that, can we legally do that? Counsel Mr. Strachan.
Your Worship, I don't know. So I recommend that Counsel consider that as a separate resolution, ask staff to investigate and report back on what communities could possibly provide that opportunity.
I would be surprised if we could legally do that, but, Mr. Chabot, uh, I would, and I guess, I don't really see that as part, but I see it as a separate motion, because we're really talking about that setting the maximum number. So I would rather that you did your motions one after the other, unless you've got something pertaining to that maximum number that you want to amend.
Um, Your Worship, no. My thinking is that I believe we're embarking on a path of no return by setting this number here, and I think that what we do at this table today in the direction that we set from the community should have some sort of a catch in it to let capital know that this is not a forever opportunity to corner this market model.
Well, Counsel can make a change anytime at once, and if we decide, like Counsel Solz was suggesting, that we review this in the spring number, that that's exact, Counsel has, can do that pretty well anytime that it wants.
Well, Your Worship, my question would be, so how do we do that? So if we have 20 people with bylaws, we just say, hey, you know, we're not, like, that's politically a very, very difficult thing to do, to say, you pay 1,300 bucks, you got sat zoned for this, and we just decided we're not going to, we're going to take that away. You know? I don't see any future Counsel, although they are in their ability to do that, to actually do that.
Well, in reference to your question, I'm talking about increasing the number. You're talking about capital wants to know what it can do, and, you know, we're going to have a motion later from you about the legality of us being able to take zoning away. But Counsel, in its discretion, can say, I don't like this 125 number anymore, it's not, not realistic. I would like to make a motion that it becomes 200, and then if everybody agrees around the table, it becomes 200 overnight. So, everybody's got their hand up, so I've got to be careful now, and I'm going to go to staff first. So, Mr. Chabot, and...
Your Worship, you answered the question.
So, Your Worship, just to keep Counsel policy and the bylaw separate, because this is a policy maximum, this is not amending the bylaw. People will forever have the right to make application for a rezoning to permit whatever use they desire of the property, and Counsel has an obligation to consider those. This will provide a framework with which to consider those things. I'd be very surprised if we could find legal means whereby uses would be taken away from a property upon a change in ownership. I might buy a property and build a purpose-built vacation rental and then want to sell that and realize the proceeds of a successful operation, and to have the uncertainty that that would create and go away seems unlikely. And further, as Counsel Orlando noted correctly, you can't better a future Counsel's discretion over zoning decisions, and so that would seem as though it's a direct better by directing when something happens in the absence of a decision by Counsel, but simply by the change in ownership of the property.
Who has their hand up? Counsel Nixon.
Your Worship, I was just going to say the same thing. This is policy we're talking about here, making room for this anytime.
Counsel English.
After hearing Counsel's remarks, I don't have to say anything. Thank you.
So the motion is to settle out a maximum vacation rental of 125 bedrooms. Is there any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Against? Motion's carried. Item five.
Item five, Your Worship, that staff review the policy level maximum number of vacation rental bedrooms and report back to Counsel in June 2017. Are we bored?
Where are you putting in print the motions that you want, Counsel Solz? We have a motion by Counsel Nixon and seconded by Counsel English. Is there discussion on the motion? Uh, Mr. Strachan.
Your Worship, just a note for Counsel. We've already committed, Counsel already passed a resolution at the last time vacation rentals were reviewed, for staff to continue to monitor what other communities are doing, and as tools are identified that we think may be helpful in Rebelstoke, we will continue to bring them forward to Counsel. So this would be that opportunity to follow through on the previous resolution as well to monitor what communities are doing and what the province is doing as well.
Counsel Nixon.
Uh, just for the community's sake, I think, you know, this Counsel is talking about this issue, and when we met to Silka, there was Counsel Duke, the mayor, and myself, and we were the community that was getting up and talking about it. So we are trying to be leading edge on this, and we are trying to do the right thing, and I feel like we're baking a cake, and we don't really have all the ingredients, but we want to have friendly, healthy neighborhoods. That's what I ran on. And so, you know, this is a good starting place, and staff will continue to look for what's quality assurance out there, the best practice, and those of us going to UBCM are going to be networking, and we're going to talk to the deputy ministers down there and see what they've got on their desk.
Motion is staff review and report back to Counsel June next year. Is there any more discussion on that? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Uh, I have one question before we jump into your stuff, if that's what Your Worship asked. Mr. Strachan, I'm looking at the report, and what I, it says in here is that we're talking about the pamphlet that is similar to what Counsel brings us using, and that is recommended that staff develop a pamphlet for Rebelstoke that's remain available. Is that just going to be done as a matter of course, or is that, or should that have been a motion in this file?
Your Worship, Counsel previously made that motion directing staff to do that, or already have that component underway. We're waiting for these pieces of information that Counsel passed resolution on to have to that information, and then we'll begin to distribute it as we begin the enforcement. So we're reviewing, as Counsel Orlando alluded to, the stick and current method for trying to get enforcement and compliance and regulation in place.
Okay. Counsel Orlando.
Uh, Your Worship, I have a new motion, um, that staff review the licensing fee, um, to reflect, with the view of reflecting the cost recovery model and the possibility of a graduated fee schedule based, what was that a little edit there? I couldn't talk in the morning session about what that means.
So, to grad, okay, well, I have a question, but I'll look for a second or first.
I'll second that.
Counsel Nixon. When you say graduated fee, what, I'm confused on being there.
Sure, I'll talk about two parts. The licensing fee I'd like to see operate on a cost recovery model. So we're, I believe, creating a new business opportunity, and these are not commercial zone properties, and there's a lot of costs associated with enforcement, staff time, and we need to move towards cost recovery model so that the taxpayers aren't paying for what should be, in my mind, covered under commercial licensing. That's the main part. And graduated fee schedule just basically means if you got one bedroom, a two-bedroom, a three-bedroom, should you be paying a different business fee for those?
Different than what's already in there, I mean?
Well, like, a hundred bucks for one bedroom, 200 bucks for two, 200 bucks for four, so different fees for different types of apartments.
Mr. Strachan.
Your Worship, as Counsel Orlando was noting, we do have a graduate system, however, it's a block of $200. That was established in 2014 as a block number, without data to demonstrate whether that was going to be adequate or not. We don't have enough of a pool of licensed vacation rentals to really evaluate what the costs are going to be, but the commitment from the get-go was developing pace for itself, cost recovery. But the pool is so small, and the timeframe has been very limited to when we've actually had them licensed. Previous to that, it was all based on tracking illegal, because everything was illegal. So now we're moving to active enforcement, we're actually going to have costs. There's a commitment in this report for staff to track the costs this fall and looking into next year's budget, so when budget time comes along later this fall, likely there's going to be requests from the administration, as well as from development services or resources to carry through.
Your Worship, it, sorry, Your Worship, if, if that is contained in the report, I don't see harm in Counsel making that clear, that it's not the taxpayers who are going to be paying.
Mr. Chabot, do you have your hand up?
Um, just thinking aloud, Your Worship, business licenses are a crude tool for cost recovery. Certainly with many types and classes of business, the cost of individual inspections will exceed the fees collected. Municipalities are only allowed to levy business licenses on a cost-recovery basis. They can't use it as a revenue generation tool, because that would constitute indirect tax, which we don't have constitutional authority for. So we look at the total cost of a business regulation scheme, including the required inspections, and ensure that the net amount collected by business licenses covers that off, so that residential taxpayers aren't subsidizing business operations, and that's just the normal case of business and the way in which it has to be done. And so that occurs inherently, although somewhat crudely, because a visit by building inspector and by the fire chief here, vacation rental, probably costs in reality more than $200, but as I say, it's a bit of a crude tool, there's some waterbedding of costs and revenues, but it's on a break-even basis and not a profit-making basis.
And I guess what I look at is I look at what are we charging other businesses for business license? And, you know, when you talk about cost recovery, I'm not sure if, if you're talking about visits by bylaw enforcement because of noise compliance and things like that. I, and I guess that's where I also have a problem, that we're tying it to a business license fee, because I think that the, any taxpayer that's affected in their neighborhood by an unruly vacation rental wants it dealt with and wants somebody visiting and wants it fixed, and what would happen, we, well, we're spending too much money on it, we're cutting back. I don't think, I think we should just leave it the way it is. I'm going to go against the motion, and then we're going to be doing a review of it again, just like we're going to be reviewing everything in this bylaw or this policy, and I'm looking forward to the next go-round, but I am happy with the way that it's turned up right now. Is there any more discussion on this motion? Counsel Ramon.
Uh, with all respect to the advice received from staff, other municipalities are doing it, I don't see why we'd do it.
Any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Against? Motion is defeated. Counsel Ramon.
Your Worship, yes, another recommendation or another motion that staff explore what other municipalities are doing to affect the expiry of the vacation rentals, sorry for the lack of great wording there, at the sale of the property.
What other communities are doing about vacation rental zoning at the pet?
It's, I don't explore that yet. It's my understanding that other municipalities have found a legal way to, to not make these transferable. What I see in, in, the many vacation rentals that have come before the community here and in this room, is people are, are the neighbors are making, are allowed to have input on this, and they're making judgments on the house based on the track record of the owner of the house. Has this person been good with their vacation rental when it was operating illegally? Is this person presented a good plan? Is this person assuaged the concerns of the neighbors? If we, if we have a system whereby once it's a vacation rental, it's always a vacation rental, I think it's a risk that these will be very quickly, the businesses to be sold off, and we could have a distant property owner who's not, who the neighbors didn't sign up for when they originally agreed to, or Counsel didn't sign up for with the original decree for this. And that's it.
Are you seconding the motion?
Yeah, it's a good question. Your Worship.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Strachan.
Worship, just for clarification, so the motion is for us...
Explore what other communities are doing when vacation rentals are sold, is there an opportunity to have that zoning pulled from the vacation rental property? Is that correct?
More or less not, the zoning pull, just it might not be zoning anything, it might be business licensing, which is part of all the options for making it expire at a point of sale.
But a business license is renewable every year anyway.
Your Worship, it would not be able to, it would have to be, to have the property rezoned as a, as a feature of change. That's what we would have to use, we'd have to explore if that's possible.
Mr. Chabot.
Well, Your Worship, that's possible, whether it's acceptable to the investment community and the building owners, it'd be a whole other matter. Counsel can initiate zoning change on any property on its own behest, and I guess if it was established such a policy, I think it would have a pretty chilling effect on the investment environment and the availability of this type of accommodation. In fact, I just want to offer to Counsel another tool that I noticed when I was driving out Airport Way, Cathwood Road, is the rather extensive use of applications for a temporary use permit to permit a vacation rental, and that allows the neighbors to get a sense of how the operation impacts their life, and I think that's a precursor to consideration of zoning amendment application that would invent that use.
So do a temporary use permit for one, two, or three years, and then go into a full zoning, rezoning after that?
Yeah.
Well, I think that that's something that staff should be looking at the merits of and making a recommendation, or coming back to a planning meeting and talking about, but, you know, I, I fully support that. Counsel English.
I appreciate what Counsel Orlando is trying to discuss. I think, you know, a big part of this discussion is preventing commodity-based pricing on properties, and I understand that. I, I think that it's, I'll support Eric's motion, having staff look at all options as well as legal. What I want to see is commodity-based pricing on vacation rentals, and that's, I think that's what he's trying to bring to the forefront, so I'll support his.
And then keeping in mind that if there is a tool, it still has to come back to this table and be approved and adopted and so on. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Counsel Solz.
Your Worship, I'd support this sort of thing too, as long as it is something that we look at what the investment community, like we just passed, or people haven't built the property yet, and may end up wanting to sell that as a business, as you mentioned, that would be something that we don't want to turn to, but I'm not opposed to looking at other options as to what the future would outturn it and the possibility of building this sort of product and then selling it.
Okay. Any more discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
Um, Your Worship, I have one more, and, um, that, and one more motion, I should say I move that Counsel, or sorry, that staff reports on option, actually, it's the staff, that owners of vacation rentals be required to show proof that the applicant is the principal resident of the home.
You want the applicant to be the principal resident of the home?
Yeah.
Is there a secondary for that motion? For a second time, is there a secondary for that motion? Motion fails for lack of secondary. Anything else, Counsel? Can we let our Counsel Ray Exell back in the room?
I think that we should maybe go back and do item E and F, just so we're keeping things clean. Is that okay?
Uh, yeah.
Nine E.
Nine E, the development activity of January 1st to August 30th, 2016, report to be received.
A motion by Counsel Duke, seconded by Counsel Nixon, I almost forgot your name, you're going to be on for some more. Ms. Strachan, you have a presentation on this.
Very briefly, Your Worship, you'll note that we're up significantly in development applications, which is, it's an important stat, because that stat tells us what's going to be happening in next year. So what you're seeing in that statistic of 35% more development permit variances, rezoning applications, you've seen, there's going to be, that's going to carry through, so that's 35% of what we saw last year, which is about another 30%. So this is a continuing growth pattern that we're seeing, a rising of under curve, with next year being the busier year than we're seeing now, more than likely. The residential has been our biggest contributor this year, it's significant, and since these stats were produced, we've already had an additional five homes come through Development Services, a lot of the ones we've had, that you're seeing here, and we're pushing close to 14 in the day construction, just in residential population. So with a number of other cortex coming up, it's going to be a busy year for us, exciting to see, but just getting us ready, we're going to be busier next year. Thank you.
I like the comment, getting us ready, busier year next year, and getting us ready. Discussion on the motion, Counsel Ramon.
Uh, yeah, Your Worship, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank staff for all the hard work, and also ask staff if there's anything Counsel can do, or perhaps they're going to be bringing forward in the budget cycle coming up, to, to deal with this increased workload, if there's any demand for load, as you suggested.
Be careful what you ask for. Mr. Strachan.
Your Worship, there are some additional resources we'll be seeking for next year. We already have some resources in place, we've been talking with Counsel since you were elected, about that threshold of 20 days where we need that second inspector, please don't take it over the budget. You know, we don't spend that money each year, let's keep it in there, because this is coming. We're now at that point. So we're evaluating the marketplace right now, they're a very precious commodity in local government right now, building inspectors, they're not easy to corral, so we want to evaluate the number of other competitions that are going on, and look to advertising for a second inspector in the very near future.
Counsel Nixon.
Your Worship, April of 2015, you and I stood over in those steps, and remember, I was laying around with big scissors, and we had the ribbon for that new development offices over there, and kudos to you and your staff, Mr. Strachan. You've been here three years now, and the numbers have gone up every year, but what I'm really impressed with is how your staff has been following legislation and trying to improve customer service at the same time. And now the building community in Rebelstoke is coming in with a complete package, and they're looking for their building permit, and that's out there in the community, and the capacity of the builders in this town, they're just going to grow over the next year, and I think it's, it's very good for Rebelstoke. So, good work.
Yes, I'd like to echo that. Good job, thank you. I think it shows that there's a real strong confidence in Rebelstoke's future with, especially with the residential development, and the next event that's going to come up is also going to show a level of confidence in the, in the tourism sector, in the commercial end of it, and I'm happy with the, the numbers for this year, and I'm looking forward to what we're going to be doing next year as well. So, good work to you and, to you and your staff, and look forward to what the future's going to bring us. Thanks, Dean. Any other comments on this motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
I'll move forward, nine F, the development permit number DP 2016-10 be approved.
Uh, motion by Counsel Duke, seconded by Counsel Nixon. And Mr. Strachan, you have a presentation on this as well?
Your Worship, very briefly, this is an application for a development permit in the CD Zone of Transcanon Highway, so property is zoned for accommodation use. This development permit is a foreign character DP, as this is a foreign character area, you see within the package, drawings depicting the hotel that is proposed to have for facade as well as for coloration. You'll note that the flag is intended to be Ramada, it's going to include a number of characteristics that will complement the area in improvement. That particular area of the quarter doesn't have a defined character at this point in time, however, good aesthetics are a good character, and we've supported the application. The change to the site plan is occurring. You'll note on the site plan that there is not a cross-connection of the parking areas to the adjacent parcel. That will be changed as part of their review with Transport Ministry, so we'll be looking for some form of reciprocal easement, so that the park connects. And the intent of that is so that if you're a guest at the hotel, you don't have to travel back out onto the frontage road in order to go to the other services that will be available in the future on that adjacent lot. So that cross-connection may not be built today, but someday in the future, when something else gets built on the remainder, the parking lots interconnect, and customers are forced onto the remainder. Thank you, Worship.
Uh, any comments or discussion from Counsel on the motion? Counsel Solz.
Worship, this is development that some of us on Counsel have been doing quite a while for, in previous Counsel, so I think this is just a really good news story, and happy to see this go forward.
Counsel Nixon.
Really nice to see some regional development proponents coming forward, that's good news.
Well, I, I'd just like to echo that, but also, I was involved years ago when this, this property was purchased by the landowner, and we recognized it a long time ago, that this is going to be the entrance to the community and a gateway, it's going to set the tone. I'm, I'm glad to see development of this caliber, the proponents are here, and I want to welcome them to the community and thank them for picking Rebelstoke to, to develop in, and I'm looking forward to this project getting finished and being part of our business community that's going to, again, add, offer more and, and good services to the traveling public and, and the tourists that want to come and stay and enjoy, enjoy our, our environment here that we all enjoy. our, our environment here that we all enjoy. Any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Thank you. Uh, where are we now? Leader on H?
I'll move forward, H nine H, the council free development variance permit application number DP 2016 dash 11 from Dennis and Rachel Kelly. If you notice, their intention to consider an issuance of development variance permit number DP 2016 11 for lot 1010391437 Cedar Street to vary the following sections of zoning by law number 1264. Number one and two, last seen in the agenda.
Counselor Duke, motion, seconded by Councilor Nixon. And, uh, Mr. Strachan, do you have a presentation on this one?
Very briefly, your worship, the home at 437 Cedar Street was built under a building permit. However, there's some additional components that were constructed, as well as the setting of the building, uh, changed when it was approved to, to what was actually put in the grounds. So they're seeking to, to clean up the, uh, get their building permit closed and, uh, would need these variances from council in order to do that for the existing structures on the site. So it's not a proposal for variance to build new structure, it's for variance to sanction existing structures.
Thank you, Mr. Strachan. Uh, we have a motion on the floor, seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Counselor?
I am, I open that one forward. Um, your worship, I move that city enter into a new agreement with Board of Education, School District number 19 Revelstoke for joint use of city and school facilities for a five-year term and that the mayor and corporate officer be authorized to sign on behalf of the city.
Motion by Councilor Lando, seconded by Councilor English. Uh, discussion on the motion, counsel?
Uh, your worship, uh, this is a joint use agreement that's been in place for a number of years, basically it covers, uh, the school district using some of our facilities and we using some of the, and this is sharing agreements. Uh, this is an update to an existing agreement that just takes into account, uh, general housekeeping, updating, changes to some of the facilities, those kinds of things.
Any more discussion on this?
Your worship, I'd just like to add that it's called your completed little review as well this time, so, um, some other changes made to it, but it's, um, little review.
Well, that's darn good to know. Is there any more discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Uh, moving into correspondence, we have a letter from the, uh, North Plumby Environmental Society regarding control of wildlife tractants. Counselor Nixon?
I think Counselor English's upcoming motion at, um, next council meeting will be dealing with this, am I correct?
I would say yes. Uh, moving into communications, we have a, uh, open house for stormwater management plan, uh, I think October 6th or something, is that it? October 6th?
Six to eight.
Community center, six to eight. Stormwater management plan. Everything you wanted to know about stormwater, how to manage it, is going to be there. Uh, Parks, Rec and Culture monthly reports, anybody want to bring anything out of that? And the business license summary of July 2016. Questions from media? Yes, uh, your worship, I have a couple for you, um, pointing back to, uh, your comments, uh, with regards to, um... I don't remember what it was either. It's escaped my mind. Uh-oh. Uh-oh, I'm going to defer to Alex. You'll, uh, you could pick it up on the video later. Alex, you have any questions?
Yeah, I noticed in the, the vacation rental thing, it said that the cap would be on existing neighborhoods, so how would future developments be incorporated into this limit?
Uh, Mr. Strachan, would you like to answer that?
It would be through the rezoning process. So this is, the policy is intended as a tool to, uh, help council evaluate vacation rentals within existing neighborhoods, as well as provide, you saw within the feedback that we received in the three, three letters, there was a number of times, give the community some sense of where this threshold is. Um, so that's the intent of the policy, it's not to, uh, feather council's future decisions on, uh, major zoning applications.
Okay, so for example, the Mackenzie Village, which is nearing approval, I guess, would that be a outside the, the, the cap and?
Yes.
Okay, and, and so there's no, there would be no limit in that area or?
Well, there is.
There is?
Yeah.
Well, there, there is in certain, a part, a certain part of it, but?
Yeah. But you're saying that there's no cap, there is a cap. Hey, Dean? Mr. Strachan?
Your worship, the, uh, so any zoning district that allows for combination is going to continue with the law for combination. So the resort zoning district, as alluded to, the Mackenzie Line is a zoning district. Uh, there's a number of other properties, as well as the commercial zoning districts with residential development on them right now, would continue to have that. Those are not actually considered vacation rentals, they're considered a combination. Um, so it may be a single-family dwelling that rents on a portion or a portion of the year. They don't fall under the vacation rental restrictions because they're a commercial zoning district, so they aren't tied to the 120-day limit, they aren't tied to that. But they also would then be taking a commercial enterprise off and would be taxed as a commercial property. Um, so they would be contributing similar to what other commercial properties would pay. Once you're using it for a commercial purpose, you're going to be taxed as a commercial property.
Okay, so in the case of Mackenzie Village, which is a CD zone, I guess it's, uh, just depending on whatever you guys own it for.
It would, we can't go back at, uh, business licensing and restrict vacation rental, it has to be done at zoning. So once the zoning is in place, um, we would not be able to put a cap on business license.
Any other questions, David?
Uh, no, that's all.
Emily, you have any questions?
Um, no, I'm good, thank you.
David, did you think of it? Yes, I did. Um, you, at the beginning of the, the, your, your message to constituents, you noted that there had been a number of fines issued for? Yes. Uh, how many, how much, how mu- how many fines have been? I don't have an accurate figure on that, but I, I think that the, the, uh, the real point that I want to make is that we are fining, but we want compliance more than we want fines. And I, I think it's, uh, the proper way to, to deal with, with issues is by first issuing a, uh, warning and, again, trying to get people to comply properly. If they're not and they're repeat offenders, they are being fined. Do you know how many warnings have been issued? Uh, do we have any, any, I, I, I tried to find that out before the meeting, could not. Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, looking for a motion, uh, pursuant to section 9.1 A, C and G, being charged, going camera, Councilor English, Councilor Solz, all in favor, carried, thank you very much.